The hearing meetings for Verona Borough, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Kenna.
President, Mr. Vicky Bell.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Dr. Carpenter.
President.
Mr. Suchevich.
Here.
Ms. Walvo.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Mayor Cooperow.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Pitch.
Here.
Okay, at this time, oh, I'm sorry.
Did I get everybody? I got everybody.
It's you.
You.
I am also here.
At this time, I'll turn the hearing over on the property issues to our solicitor, Mr. Alexander.
Thank you, Madam President. Today is the day and time that we've scheduled a public hearing on two proposed subdivision applications. The first is the application filed on behalf of Steel City Billboard LLC with regard to the D and D property plan of lots, the property located at 915 Allegheny River Boulevard. The applicant proposes to subdivide the property into two lots, lot one being nineteen thousand and fifty square feet or .437 acres, and lot two being two hundred square feet or .005 acres, as well as the subdivision application of the estate of Ruth Murray with regard to the Murray subdivision plan for property located at 466 Wildwood slash 558 State Street. That applicant is seeking to subdivide the property into four parcels. So first we'll call on the Steel City Billboard LLC folks to present their subdivision application to the board.
First just, I want to thank all of you for your time this evening. Time is precious. I'd like to kind of introduce myself and a few who may not know me, and then my family's looking as well. My name's Jim Folks, and with me, my boss, Paulie Folks, my son Mitch and his boss, Casey. I'm not exactly sure what all you'd like me to present, so I have a packet of information that kind of outlines what we're.
That would be great.
If you'd like to.
That would be great.
Could you pass those out to me, please? So Mitch and I are, we founded Steel City Billboards in 2011, and we have six different billboards around the city right now. We have one over on Route Eight. We have two in Volker Road in South Hills, one in the city limits on Songill Run Boulevard. And then we have three digital billboards, one in Mount Lebanon on Washington Road, kind of the main drag through Mount Lebanon, and then two on Route 88 in Castle Shannon. So the reason we're here tonight is for the subdivision and to have approval for, put up a digital billboard on that property at 915 Allegheny River Boulevard. Most of you probably know that as the Midway Brewing property. So in September of last year, we requested and received the variance from the zoning hearing board, the court billboard, and then in February, we received approval from the planning commission for the subdivision. So kind of here's why we're here this evening.
Right now, you're just seeking the subdivision, nothing with regard to the actual proposed billboards. That would be comments sometime in the future.
Okay, so.
Is that right?
I'm not sure how that's. The subdivision was already approved. We're here seeking that. I mean, I guess that's what I'm, maybe not clear about.
Now, the zoning hearing board had to first approve the variances to allow the billboard, the digital billboard. So if he's able to get subdivision approval, he can then submit for a building permit for the billboard. So we are here on the subdivision. The planning commission recommended approval, and now it's here before council for formal approval. And once that happens, they can submit to council for the billboard. No, I mean, they'll submit to the Borough for UCC. Right, for the Borough. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, yeah, so I guess, you know, I guess maybe, you know, I could go into all the details of what the billboard's going to be, the size and so forth, but I guess that depends on if you really have any questions, you know, of what it's going to look like and the manufacturer. I can kind of give you some, kind of an overview of what it'll be, maybe so that I can maybe answer the question for you before you even have them. So our billboard is, it's a digital billboard, and they're a lot different than like the digital signs that you might, the smaller digital signs that you might see. They're monitored by the manufacturer as far as brightness goes. They have a photocell on them, so they reduce the brightness depending on the ambient lighting around them. So at nighttime, the typical billboard, it runs at about five percent of the capacity of the billboard itself. So, and then the manufacturer maintains the control of the brightness, so we don't have access to that because they don't want us, you know, turning it up or whatever, just because of federal regulations and so forth. So they handle all of that. If there's a request to, you know, to dim it, that would go right to the manufacturer, and they can do it, you know, online, and they can manage that, they manage it that way. So what, inside the package there, the first thing you'll see is kind of a little introduction, which I kind of already did, and I just wanted to kind of highlight our advertising philosophy because I think that's important. So what we try to do is we try to provide effective and affordable advertising for local businesses and for businesses that would service the local community here. And the advertisements that we display are geared towards the local community. We don't display anything offensive or any inappropriate kind of advertising. We gear our advertisements to what, to the community values. And then the rest of this document is really just an overview of the project itself, the companies that we use to create, to develop the steel and the scholar and so forth. And then the next thing is, just to kind of give you an idea of what the kind of ads that we do display, I've given you about twenty-something of different ads that we either are currently displaying or have displayed in the past. So this kind of gives you an idea of what the ads look like. It should be right at the beginning. Uh-oh, did we miss the package?
Yeah.
That'll show you the kinds of, you know, the types of ads that we display. And then just kind of more for information purposes, the next item in the package is the Pennsylvania State Code as it relates to billboards. And what I did, what we did is we went through and highlighted each of the items in the ordinance and show how that we could comply with the state code too, because once we get far enough along, we will have to have a state permit as well.
Right, so just for the record, you do comply with 67 PA Code 445.4, the state code.
Yes, right, right. Now, we have four other state permits along state highways, so, you know, we understand the regulations and what we have to do in order to get the permits, and we have a pretty good working relationship with the gentleman that handles all the permits. Now, the next thing is just a brochure of the actual billboard that we were proposing. One of the things that I wanted to highlight is really, like, page four of that is where it actually talks about how it reduces the lighting in the nighttime hours down to roughly five percent of the capacity.
Okay, now, the billboards in that exhibit, there are various sizes and whatnot. I guess really, you'll get to it in a little bit, but the billboard that you're actually proposing is used on the second to last, right?
Yeah, actually, on the third page of that brochure, it shows the size. It's eight feet, four inches wide and seventeen feet, ten inches high. So it's going to be more of a portrait style as opposed to a horizontal.
Much less intrusive, did he say?
Well, it kind of fits, you'll see when we get to that photo, it kind of fits right into where that, where it's going to be positioned. Is that one two-sided? No, a single side. One side, right. And then the next thing that we have here is a light study that was done by the, by the, by the manufacturer, and this is, this is to show you how much light actually comes off of the billboard. And you'll see in that picture, there's kind of a fan shape on there, and then there's some numbers on there. And what is, what is this stuff here is that two hundred feet from the actual billboard, it shows you what the foot candles will be, and they range from .02 to .044. And to kind of give you an idea of how that fits, we, the billboard we have in Castle Shannon, they actually have foot candle requirements in their ordinance, and their maximum they allow is .5. So you can see we're, I'm not real good at math on there, but we're significantly under Next then is the actual, kind of a rendering. Now, that's not, that's not perfect to size. We just kind of did that to just kind of give you an idea of what the billboard's going to look like once it would be in place. But that gives you an idea of where it's going to be. Also included a certificate of liability insurance. We'll probably need that, I guess, when we get required for the building permit. This certificate has Verona Borough as its certificate holder. And then the last thing is a letter that I had sent a good while back, actually back in August to Mr. Vicky Bell, outlining just a couple of things that we'd like to do for the, for the community. One, we were going to allocate forty-five minutes a day to just, to display any kind of advertising or any kind of things that the Borough itself would like to display, community events, honor employee, or whatever you might have in mind. We also would display any, like amber alerts or any senior citizen alerts or any of those kinds of things as well. And at that time, we can, we can work with whoever would be, you know, doing, putting some ads together to do that. And then the last thing is, we are working with Schiller Township. They actually, we actually help them pay for their internet access for our billboard over there. They have cameras at the intersection of where Middle Road or Saxonburg Boulevard comes into Route Eight. They have cameras all around that, and it's part of an, it's part of the Allegheny County, I'm not sure the name of the program.
Right, we're familiar with it.
Okay, so we help them pay for half, we pay half of the internet for them over there each month. And what we have proposed, I think in the letter I said half, but what we propose is we would pay the cost of the internet, monthly cost of the internet for Verona here, if you need to or want to put some cameras on, on our board, on the structures there.
That'd be great.
So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Any questions we might have, we'd be happy to answer.
Does any board member or mayor have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. Is it just the picture? It just looks so huge in there. Is that just the?
Yeah, it wasn't a very good rendering, but we just wanted to kind of get an idea of what it's going to look like. It's eight feet wide and about, almost eighteen feet tall.
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
Well, it does look pretty big.
Well, we have, I wish I had, I didn't have those pictures with me. I should have brought a picture of one. We have, we have those eyes in both in Mount Lebanon and in Castle Shannon. The only difference is it's not a portrait, it's a sideways.
My second question is, it would be to the board. I don't have a problem with what you're, you know, proposing. The streetscape that, you know, we went through, they were trying to, I guess the theme was an older town, you know, with signs and what have you. I mean, I think, you know, that's something we have to consider because they put a lot of, there's a lot of people that put a lot of time and effort, and not only that, you know, the money that was allocated to us with, I guess, with Allegheny, you would know more, with Allegheny together.
We tried to get get-go to follow in suit with our landscape and stuff like that. To me, it looks kind of big. Now, is this similar to the billboard located at Allegheny River Boulevard in Sandy Creek?
It's similar to that.
That it would go the other way.
It would go the other way. That one's actually a little bit bigger than what this one would be. That's why I was saying my, my rendering there is not really the scale.
Yeah.
No, because the height of it, it looks like it would be taller than the building if you set it on the ground.
Well, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we know how tall that building is?
About, yeah.
I think it's about ten, ten feet tall, I would say.
Yeah, that came out.
It's actually, it's twelve feet, I believe, to the, to the light that's on the side of that building.
It's about fourteen feet.
Yeah, it's probably closer to.
Just judging by the picture, it's about two man doors high.
It would be higher than the building.
It will be, yeah. Yeah, we want, we want to get it up off of the ground so that we don't have any issue.
But if you were to take this billboard and set it on the ground and lay, set it right up against the building, would it be taller?
It might be about three feet, about three feet, about three feet tall, yeah.
Can you make it smaller?
Well, how tall's, if you're looking at the billboard, you look at the other one on the other side, how tall is that other billboard?
Well, it's landscape oriented.
I understand, just asking, how tall that other one? Is anybody, any idea?
Let me ask you this, Jim. What if, and I know you said the lighting isn't going to be controlled and everything, but what if we start getting complaints, you know? That thing is so overwhelming and, you know, for people, you know, going towards Oakmont.
I can tell you from, from experience that we have three of them right now, and we have had zero complaints about the lights. I think that's the difference between digital billboard and a digital sign is, is how they are able to monitor that and keep the light down. It uses the ambient lighting around it to adjust the brightness.
Your other places are on busier routes, like Route Eight, Songill Run Boulevard, I mean.
Yeah, well, the digital billboards are on, one is in Castle Shannon, it's on Route 88. There's about seventeen thousand cars, I believe, that go on that road.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about a small town here that's two, three blocks long.
Yeah, I understand. So if that's a problem, then we would have the manufacturer.
Adjust.
Right, right. But like I said, we have, we haven't had any problems with it so far with the other three that we have.
So what is the cost of Verona for this?
Cost of Verona is nothing. No, the cost is, the cost is, we endure, or we inter all the costs. There's not even any cost to our, to the, you know, but John, Mr. Don, there's no cost to it either.
So it would be the local businesses, then, that are paying?
For the ads.
For the ads.
Correct.
And that's how it gets paid for.
Right.
So what if the local businesses don't put anything on?
Well, then we, then we absorb the cost, and that would be, you know. So it won't just be local businesses, it will be other businesses that may service the local area. For example, we may, we may have, one of our, one of the clients we had for a good long, good long time with Beverley Services, they have somewhere in the area of like sixty service trucks, and they pretty much go all over the county. So that, for example, might be somebody that would advertise. I'm not saying they will, I'm just saying that's, so they would service the local community, but they're not actually necessarily from the local community.
So, like, I'm looking at some of these, you would put the Homeland Garden Show on there. So that's more a wider audience of just local, suburban.
Right, right.
And, I don't know what else you have here. Hospitals, I know down on ARB by Sandy Creek, EPMC.
Right.
Does that, is that your bill?
That's not ours, no. No.
I guess, when I was first thinking about this, when you started bringing it up, for some reason in my mind, I visualized it as being more of the horizontal than the vertical.
Yeah, if you look, if you drive on Allegheny River Boulevard, if you're going towards Oakmont, when you, when you go past the red light there, you'll see that, excuse me, this board will fit kind of in between the telephone pole, and then there's like a guide, guide pole or something. You can't see it on that, that rendering because it's back a little bit further. But this kind of fits in there. If we went sideways, we'll be back into the hillside, and.
Does it have to be that big?
It doesn't have to be that big, but that, that makes a nice, that kind of makes a nice size. It doesn't, I wish I would have done a better job on the rendering because I think, I think that makes it look a lot bigger than it's going to.
Yeah, but seventeen feet's pretty big.
Yeah, it's three feet taller than the building, right.
And it'll be ten foot off the ground? I'm just going by the notes.
Roughly, roughly ten feet, right.
So that's approximately twenty-seven feet, then?
About twenty-seven feet high, correct. Yeah, we need to get it off the ground just to keep it.
Safe, yeah.
People, protect them from. It'll probably be a little bit lower than the billboards on the other side of the building, Matt Lamaro's, the two coming into Verona on the left-hand side. It would probably be a little bit lower in height compared to that.
So how does that forty-five minutes that you're donating to the Borough per day, so how does that work out? Like, how many times per hour, or how long for how many times per hour? How does that work out?
Well, we're estimating that the ads will probably run about seven and a half seconds, six, well, I guess I should say six to eight seconds. It just depends on how many we end up, end up doing. So, well, if you've got forty-five minutes divided by twenty-four hours, so it would be a couple minutes every hour. What does that quarter come up?
Thirty-two times a day.
Correct.
Thirty-two times a day, I think?
Yes, it would be, it would be like once every four minutes for a, for an actual.
All day long?
Yeah.
Any other further word comment? I do want to get to Mr. Stanton.
Mm-hmm.
We have one other on Folks here. Any other questions of the applicant? Mr. Stanton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you give an overview of the presentation to the planning commission and the recommendation? The planning commission asked about the same questions that have been asked by council. They thoroughly discussed it among themselves, discussed it with Mr. Folks, and the planning commission felt that it would actually be a good thing, it'll brighten up the town, and they did note Mr. Folks is a Verona resident, and they don't think they'll do anything to PO anybody.
Derogatory.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think they felt it was a reasonable proposal, and. Do you share in their recommendation? Yes, I do. Do you have, offering anything else? No. Do we have any comments for Mr. Stanton?
Thank you.
Does any member of the public have any comment with, on this proposed subdivision application?
I believe the location is out of the area that Allegheny, it's not the business district. I don't think that's considered the business district that.
I think, I think, I think Don's right. I think that's considered the core business district. They were, that was part of that.
I just looked it up in the zoning, and that district is defined as between center and south.
Okay.
So we're good with that.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, one more. What are the cost of the advertising? What's the cost if someone in Verona wants to advertise? What would the average advertising cost then?
Well, it depends on how much time, the board is basically controlled on time, how much time you would want to advertise it, you know.
Okay, that's on the state for five minutes, or how you rent a minute?
So if you, we have, we'll have prices probably as low as three hundred dollars per month.
A month?
Yeah.
Okay, that's somewhere in that. How, how is that? Like a flash, ten seconds, twenty seconds?
Well, all the ads will display for the same amount of time when they come up, just the frequency of how they come up.
Right, we have many times a day we're getting them on.
For that, it would be similar to what we're offering.
Five forty-five minutes, right. Okay, that, over a month, okay, right.
Okay, there being no other public comment. Madam President, I would pass it back to you for a motion to approve or deny the subdivision application.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve or disapprove the subdivision of the Steel City Billboard's presentation?
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Conti to approve, second by Mr. Suchevich. Are there any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The second subdivision application before council is the application of the estate of Ruth Murray with regard to the Murray subdivision for property located at 446 Wildwood Avenue slash 558 State Street, seeking to subdivide the property into four parcels. Sir, representative from the applicant here, please come forward. Please state your name.
Frank Formarotti, Verona Real Estate.
You are here on behalf of the executrix of the estate.
Yes, correct. Mr. Pelfell.
Can you give the board an overview of what you're seeking?
Before Mrs. Murray passed away, she asked me to come down, she wanted to sell the property on the old police station. I went to her private, and I told her best, to get the highest and best value to subdivide the properties here because basically with Allegheny County, it's two parcels, 558 State Street with Mrs. Murray, she had two car garage in the back, and there's a house behind there, and it's 316 Wildwood Avenue, but, so it's two parcels. But one downtown Allegheny County, Allegheny County has 420 and 316 on the same lot. It's a house and a commercial building, so that wouldn't, that wouldn't go well, so I got a hold of my surveyor. I think he's sick, that's why he couldn't come to me and not make it, but I already prepaid him. I mean, learn my lesson, hard way all the time. Yeah, sorry. But he did a good job, and Ruth's here, was here with the zoning hearing board, but Mayor was here. We had some math drawn, but he's not here to show, but we're just going to subdivide the house, the house in the back, the three-bay garage, the office space, and 420. Those 420 and 316 is on the same lot, so we can not all subdivide, it costs about seventy-five hundred dollars.
Frank, now, your application didn't say it, but are they fairly equal in size, all four lots?
No, no, not, no.
So what are you proposing?
Well, that's, he was supposed to be here with a breakdown, you know what I mean? Now, I don't have.
They're on the back of that page.
I don't have that.
All four lots are listed there.
Yeah, I want to, Ruth's had a broken down of the square feet and, you know, the billboard.
Okay, can you now?
And in, in agreement, I have it sold, but the contingency has to approve.
All, all four?
You find, you find them all, yes.
Okay, is there four or five?
Four. There's Ruth Murray's house, the three-bay garage and the office, the ranch in the back, and.
There's a wall, it's a regular one.
Okay, it says 416 Wildwood and 558 State Street.
Yes.
Okay.
That's 558.
Yeah.
That's 416.
Okay.
It's 420. What's the back house, the address to the back house?
Yeah, that's, that one with the number in the back, if you're honest with me, it has the number.
That would be Wildwood, too.
And 420 is on 416. It's, you know, it airs, but that's why I get it to subdivide it. Just, just, gotta do it right. It's not, it's not right at all. That's why I get it subdivided, I'll be able to handle it better. He had all the drawing here, he didn't show up or something.
Is there a complication because part of it's in town?
No.
No, we're here in Kenyatta, we talked about that, he knows that.
Okay.
Yeah, it is. There's a creek there.
No structures in there, so it doesn't...
Okay.
What is up, divide down here? I guess, we talked to Penn Hills, too. They said, they didn't look at it because it was just a... This is the...
I think I have a lot of these cars, I'll fix up real quick. It's nicer, you know.
A little bit of this is in Penn Hills.
Mr. Murray Thompson, your engineer knows, have we talked about where it's here from?
Yeah, he's, they're okay with it. I'm just making sure Penn Hills is okay with it.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Stanton, by this subdivision, also you attended the planning commission meeting?
Correct.
And the planning, and the other one, the planning commission has recommended approval of this?
Right, the planning commission went through it thoroughly and they asked for a few small changes to recognize the creek and also that one lot has to have access to their lot off of State Street, so...
Were those concerns corrected to the planning commission's satisfaction?
They were, they were, and we have to correct the drawing here, so, and it's been sent to the county.
So, would that be Lot 2, Mark?
Lot 1.
Lot 1.
Lot 1 would need access through Lot 2, through that slag road.
There's a note on Lot 2 that guarantees Lot 1.
Can get in.
Through the slag driveway.
Okay.
Mr. Stanton, do you share in the planning commission's recommendation on this subdivision as well?
Yes.
Okay. Does any member of the public wish to offer any testimony or comment with regard to the Murray subdivision plan? Seeing none, Madam President, I would turn to you for a motion to approve or deny.
Oh, I'm sorry, one question? What's that zoned? Is it, is the whole thing zoned? Commercial?
Yes, sir.
Any other board comment? Madam President, I pass it back to you for a motion to approve or deny.
Can I have a motion to approve or deny the subdivision of the property on State Street and Wildwood?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to...
To go along.
Approve?
Approve it, yes.
Okay, motion to approve by Mr. Conti, second by Mr. Suchevich. Are there any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. One other comment. I've been three years on verbal council and I'm glad I'm out.
Hey, find your engineer and get your money back. Yeah. Tell him he owes you a couple.
I've been on my life, he's pretty short. He's here, man.
Apparently he is pretty short.
So, we're going to go right into, we have additional public hearings on demolitions. You guys are welcome to stay or...
See you, Frank.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Thanks, Folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Folks. There goes them folks. The old boss and the young boss.
So, we have a public hearing on demolitions of four properties within the borough. It is Daniel and Michelle Voith, whose property, that's V-O-I-P-H, whose property is at 473 Union Street, lot and block 364-G-260, Sharon Seaman at 558 Church Street, lot and block 364-S-92, Leah Kinsey, K-I-N-Z-E-Y, and Sarah Milliken, M-I-L-I-K-E-N, 849 Third Street, Verona, lot and block 364-H-150, and James and Carol Gaydos, or Gaydos, G-A-Y-D-O-S, 515 East Railroad Ave., lot and block 364-P-312. Is any property owner here on any of those four properties? No. Okay, Mr. Stanton, you want to give the board an overview of the 473 Union Street, the nature of the violations and why it constitutes a public nuisance?
That property has been vacant for at least four years. On numerous occasions, it's been found wide open. Kids or ne'er-do-wells have been in and out of there. The interior is trashed, the exterior, like from the street, it doesn't look all that bad, but when you see the house, it's just in horrible condition and it is abandoned. And, you know, we've had it closed up several times and someone keeps breaking into it and it suffers the usual things with the leaky roof and that, that you have plaster down in there and you have animals in there and it would make no sense to restore that house.
Mark, excuse me, which house was that?
473 Union.
Okay.
And are there any various code interactions with regard to the property?
Whatever code violation you can think of, it has, it has, you know, broken doors, broken windows, broken plaster siding, peeling paint. It's just, it's just abandoned. And you abandon a property and it doesn't take too long to become quite a nuisance and that is over there.
In your opinion, is this property a public nuisance?
It is, it is a public nuisance.
And in your opinion, does it warrant demolition?
It does warrant demolition.
With regard to the property of Sharon Seaman at 558 Church Street, can you give the board a similar overview, please?
Yeah, that property, and probably a lot of you know, it's been nothing but complaints for years. Two years ago, the borough paid to rob the lot out because it was so overgrown. It's another structure with peeling paint, it's broken windows, broken doors, the interior is trashed. The prior inspector took photographs of it, it's absolutely horrible and it would make no economic sense to fix it. I think it's got like a serious case of termites because the front of it is kind of saggy and it's absolutely a public nuisance and should be demolished.
So, that is your professional opinion?
That is, yes.
And how about the 849 Third Street, Leah Kinsey and Sarah Milliken?
This is another, another property that's maybe a little newer on the list, but I got complaints from the neighbors because the owners were attempting to rent it out and if any of you looked at it, and I noticed it a few years ago, that it had the lean to the building, now it's leaning even more. And apparently the one neighbor had gone through the house because he found it open and then closed it up. And he said the whole house, like you walk in it, apparently the termites have eaten it so badly that it like shakes. And it's a very, very old house. Maybe it was here like a farmhouse or something. And like I said, it has a serious lean to it. Part of the foundation, it looks like logs underneath the house. And to me, it would make no economic sense to repair it. The taxes have not been paid, of course, on any of these for a few, number of years. And we've notified the owners several times, actually at least three full times by certified mail. And one gentleman wanted to buy the property and like tear the house down and acquire the property and they won't respond to his messages. Now, from what I got on Google, the one lady is 97 years old and apparently the other one's a daughter, it's like in her 70s. So, it may be a situation where they're not capable of doing anything about it and probably the family doesn't care. So, I believe that it's, there's no way it makes economic sense to fix it. Nobody's going to buy to fix it. It's just too far gone and it's a bit ahead of there. Now, in my little memo here, there was a mistake, it said an engineer examined it for safety. That was the letter I sent to have an engineer or an architect look at the building to state whether it's safe. And like I said, we've had no response from them.
You requested a structural analysis?
Yeah, any condemned structure, a person would have the right to fix it, okay, up to the time of demolition. If they come and say, okay, and I have the money to do it or a bond, you know, we would have to let them. But I don't believe any of these are going to be in that position.
How about James and Carol Gaydos?
That was probably the worst of all of them and I think all of you are aware of it. Just the property is just a total, it's horrible. The prior inspector did a search warrant, they put pictures inside, it's been infested with animals and I think it had homeless cats in it. Just the waste situation has virtually ruined the building and it's had no heat or anything in it. The paint is peeling, the siding is rotting, the roof is bad. It's just, it's just beyond being repaired. And the yard itself is, someone was feeding cats or something there which attracts more cats and they're not taken care of, they're not like someone's pet that they're responsible for. So, you know, the animals are animals and it's an absolute nuisance in the neighborhood. I don't know how they can, it definitely should be demolished. And there's no economic sense to fix it. The other thing is all of these properties wind up in a situation where even if someone wants to buy it, some legal impediment to it, an encumbrance, and you just can't resolve these and you end up losing the structure.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mr. Stanton, you indicated that you provided notice, you know, various letters by certified mail. With regard to this demolition hearing, we know that it's been advertised in the Valley News Dispatch. Were the property owners also given written notice?
The property owners were sent certified mail, first-class mail, the properties were posted.
That was going to be my next question.
With notices and I photographed the notices in place, right on the buildings. I don't know if any of you saw, we went, effort, made some nice signs and put them on there so that if somebody somehow decided they wanted to try to save it, they could come here and explain how they were going to do it.
Okay.
There's no contact from any of these owners.
Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Stanton?
Just, Mark, just for the record, can you like explain to the people in the public as well as maybe some of the council that needs, needs repetition of things, me for example? Like, we demolished these houses and then we, then what? Do we get stuck with empty properties?
It depends on the funding source. Apparently, like when you get the grant through the cog, there's no lien placed on the property. And that's great, except there's usually already mortgages or liens on there. Now, if the borough expends their own funds, like you did with...
The convent.
Bonavita and with the convent, a lien is filed for and a note on the Bonavita property, you got your $10,000 back, which was, you know, which was nice to get. And there is a lien in place for the convent property. So, on these would depend what funding source, if any available, that you would use. But especially Gaydos is just really the worst eyesore in the neighborhood. Church Street, the neighbors have been complaining for years about it, so, and you know, there's always a few more that can go on the list, too.
Right.
Any, any member of the public wish to make any comment or testimony with regard to the four properties under consideration for demolition? I'd like to record reflect that there is none. So, Madam President, I will close the public hearing with regard to the demolitions. We can consider that at the regular meeting at 7:00. And I would pass it back to you for a motion to adjourn the public hearings.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the public hearings? Motion by Dr. Carpenter, second by Mrs. Provenza. Are there any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Is that right?
Thank you, Mark.
The east row of them? Oh, yeah?